All right, hello everyone and welcome to our, your city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowzen?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Feis?
Here.
Thank you. All right, what I will remind you of, if we have to, if we can't conduct business and there's a lot of chatter, we may have to move some people in and out, but we need to be able to hear to be able to conduct business and we need to be able so that the folks are watching. So if you could help us, we have a lot of incredible people in the audience today. So if you can help us kind of keep the noise down a little bit, that helps us to proceed with business. So we would ask and thank you for that as well, but could you please join us in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Waterloo Boy Scouts Pack number 3025. So please stand and join us for the pledge. Sure.
Could you guys come up so we can put you on Facebook?
If you've got some binoculars.
That's Girl Scouts.
Just kidding.
Let me see, you want them there Tara or? Or they can come up here so they can face the, so if you want to come around and you can turn, well, you gotta turn towards the flag. So if you want to come up right around here, that'll be great. All right, so if you want to lead, we will, we will follow you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what, normally we don't, but is, would you tell us how you can be involved? If there's more young people that are looking just really quickly, a little bit about the young people?
Brock Williver, Cub Master for PAC 3025, and thank you Mayor and City Council for having us here and leading you in the pledge of allegiance and congratulations on your recent lifetime award, achievement award. So if any youth or scouts are interested in joining, Cub Scouts or scouting America, they can go to scouting.org and look up the Wyndham Bagel Council. And we were here tonight because, and a big thank you goes out to Councilman Dave Bowzen. He attended one of our annual or monthly PAC meetings and taught us about city council and what all of your responsibilities are for one of their achievements or one of their adventure badges, so. I would also like to make note of this month, at the end of the month is our Pine Wood Derby. So we would like to offer Mayor and Councilman Bowzen Derby kit cars if you're willing to race. It's March 30th, check in is at 12:10 and then the race begins at 1 o'clock at Blessed Maria. And that's all we have. I got the kits and the rules here for you too.
So, so March 30th, 30th is the?
Saturday.
Saturday is the event. So why don't you reach out to Tara and then let's see if we can let a few more people know about that so we can get it connected and let people know as well.
Chief Duncan is passing you out the rules and regs for the cars, so.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you so much and congratulations.
I've made a lot of these.
Dave and I are gonna race.
I've made a lot of these cars.
I love their handkerchiefs and all their patches. I mean, not up close. Like, do they really teach you to do?
And thank you, Mr. Bowzen.
Tying knots and, I mean, more than tying knots, of course, but everything outdoors. What? That is so neat. I love that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed as well as approval of minutes of the February 6th, 2025 special council session and the February 17th, 2025 regular council session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Right, we have an agenda. The first item, first part of our agenda would be public comments. It's your opportunity to talk about non-agenda related items. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Aaron Stacey Roberts, 411 Almond, Steel Slave. When I ended last time, I was speaking on Tyler Hunter in the case that you have along with Mr. Hall. And it takes me to February 14th of 2023 when I went to the Mayor's Office, Buck Clark, Dan Trackle, communicated with them about threats on my life relating to case 9914612 was the rape and kidnapping of my daughter in Irmandale High School restroom. When I left there February 7th of 2013, I thought we had a very good understanding that I was gonna get some assistance into looking into this criminal organization. February 14th, I got a call and I went down to the Sheriff's Office, they needed to see me, and I got an MHO case 013288. And that was put in effect by Judge Kelly Ann LaCarre. I want to skip forward to 2016 when Kelly Ann LaCarre denied me fundamental fairness, procedural due process, and committed dereliction of duty with what I see to be willful one con, one tongue misconduct. And what she did at that point was allow 109 acres of farmland that I was an heir to to be sold without me getting notice to appeal, nor did I get, was able to find, sign a family settlement agreement, nor did I have an attorney after she knew, had me committed for being seriously mentally impaired. So I didn't get due process in this matter, nor did many of my other family members. Judge Kelly Ann LaCarre as well as David, Judge David Oderkirk knew that April 22nd, excuse me, March 7th of 2016, the Honorable Andrea Dreyer ordered the administrator of our farm to bring in the, all of the complete accounting of all of the actions as fiduciary. That was March 7th. On the 22nd, Kelly Ann LaCarre totally disregarded that and allowed my aunt to hire James Wagner, an attorney who had been debarred and now he's dead, to sell our property without any of us getting notice. Not any. Out of 29, three people signed, so those were the three that got to notice. Like I said, that was not due process for 26 others. And why am I here alone? Because after the case 9914612 and the mental health case, and my family seeing the retaliation that this criminal organization will do to you, not including the history that us as African Americans have had to live through in this, they're very much scared. I'll start from there next time.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Nick Warts. I serve as the Director for Immigrant Refugee Community Services at LSI Lutheran Services in Iowa. We're one of the state's largest human service organizations, providing foster care and adoption services, disability services, early childhood programs, mental health programs, and I lead our immigrant refugee program. So wanted to come and address the council this evening because we came to the council a little over two years ago as we were working with community stakeholders to reestablish refugee resettlement programming here in the Cedar Valley and wanted to come before you this evening to let you know kind of all of the impacts that are unfolding as a result of changes in our federal administration and how that's impacting local families here and our services here in Waterloo. Just as some background, and I know many of you know this well, the US Refugee Resettlement Program is a program that is established at the federal level through the US Department of State. It's been in place over 45 years and has been supported by administrations from, from both parties since, since 1980. It is our country's best and most secure legal immigration pathway for people who have been persecuted in their home country, cannot go back home, they cannot stay where they have initially sought safety, and so they are provided an opportunity to come to the United States and many other countries and start a new life here. Many wait in refugee camps for decades to be able to go back home and again, then if not able to do so, the US historically offers resettlement as kind of a last option to, to individuals. It is all coordinated through the Department of State, through the federal government, and the Department of State then in turn works with local nonprofits such as LSI to greet families at the airport, find housing, and help them get on their feet and become productive members of their new local communities. I know I don't have to educate this council or this community on the positive impacts that refugees have made here. This community historically has been a very welcoming place to refugees and other immigrant groups, welcoming Bosnians in the 90s and, and many others from, from around the world. LSI, over the last several years, has worked with community stakeholders to reestablish a program here in the Cedar Valley. It had been paused for a number of years and came before this council and, and those who were on council at the time voiced their support for the program. We had the support of local employers, healthcare providers, schools and faith communities to restart the program and the Department of State approved resettlement services to begin here in Waterloo in 2023. As an organization, we welcomed our very first families over this last summer in July of 2024 and since then have welcomed 93 individuals from Afghanistan, Syria, Venezuela and a variety of other countries from, from around the globe. I wanted to update you now on kind of the actions of the administration, how that's impacting families here. On January 20th, an executive order was signed which ceased and paused the refugee resettlement program. That has now?
10, 15 more seconds.
10 or 15 more seconds. We'd love to follow up with the council on how this is impacting families. We are now at risk because of lack of federal reimbursement of families becoming homeless and not getting into the workforce as we normally would help them do so, and asking the council to support us by reaching out to federally elected officials to reimburse for services that this community needs.
And do either one of your colleagues have any comments to?
Do you guys want to say a few things?
So. So we, we're all podium because the folks that are looking can't hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Erin Good. My home address is? My home address? No?
Or your business address, but we need something.
3640 University Avenue, Waterloo. Okay. The Cedar Valley has been super impactful to our immigrants and refugees. You guys have really rallied around us and we've appreciated your support. I just want to thank you guys for that and reaching out to our government to help support us to get reimbursed really helps not only our staff but our community, getting our immigrants back into the community and contributing. So I just wanted to thank you.
I think it's important work and you have a shining star that's working with you, for you, Mr. Smith. He's reached out to me a couple times to kind of keep me updated and in the future we're hoping to get together with Tara so that we can figure out how we can promote the services. Our strategic goal is a community of opportunity and with that said, we want to make sure that we continue to let people know the valuable services that are there for them because we appreciate the work and all the efforts they make to making us a very diverse and successful community. So we want to thank you for all your efforts. I know two years ago when we met, seems like yesterday, but for you who have been working in the field to try to bring these services here, it could be a very long time, but we're very grateful for the efforts and I want to thank Mr. Smith for his continued efforts in reaching out and make us aware of everything that's happening as well. So thank you very much. There was a question that was asked by Councilman Bowzen and if there's any way that you can send out information or get some more information about your services to the city council, that would be greatly appreciated. I will have Tara give you the email address. I'll have Tara give you the email address so that you know exactly where to send those items to and the council, you can set up meetings with the council as well to give them an update so they have an extra resource to know where they can direct some of their constituents in their wards as well. So please feel free to reach out to each and every one of them and we will, once you send us the information, we will send you back the contact information for council.
Terrific, thank you, we can do that.
All right, thank you. All right, next, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Mary Potter and I am a trustee for the Grouse Museum and I'm so happy to see this tonight. I wanted to say I'm also a trustee at the Water Works. And when I looked at this paper tonight, excuse me, it was showing in here that you're building a stronger city through infrastructure. This little piece that came out, thanks to whomever puts it out. And it says the Water Works has a $4.7 million project and it is, if you read it, you'll see what that's about. But one of the things that many times people get upset about is they think our water rates are too high. So read this carefully and it'll say we have the lowest water rates in Iowa and we are a low price leader for combined water and sewer bills among the largest 10 cities in Iowa. Then it also says we have the best tasting water. So you people have a lot to be proud of, just like these people that are leaving. They have done a lot for the city. The Water Works does a lot for the city also, so pay attention. Now, I wanted to also talk about the Grouse Museum. We have facility rentals that I'm not sure that you're all aware of and those, somebody say something, okay. They are something that I think you all need to be aware of. You can host a special event at the Grouse Museum District at the Snowden House, which blends Victorian elegance with modern charm, makes it ideal for weddings, showers and formal gatherings. It can accommodate up to 100 guests. Then the Iowa Veterans Museum is a sleek, versatile place that's perfect for everything from reunions to corporate meetings and celebrations. And the Grouse Museum Conference Room is a great spot for birthday parties, graduation parties, our meetings. The mess hall and the lobby will seat over 200 guests. So if you want information on this, you can call the Grouse Museum and ask to speak to Teresa Bryant and she will give you all the information you need. Last Saturday night, they had a Mardi Gras there and it was a fundraiser and it was also a lot of fun. It told me how much I do not know about the Mardi Gras because we had questions that were a trivial thing. It was very interesting and I would really ask you all to consider again a membership in the Grouse because it is such an important part of Waterloo. It is such an important part of bringing people to the town. It is a positive thing we have for the, for the neighborhood and for the town. So please give that some consideration as you are, either thinking of things to go, things, thinking of places to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Council members. Excuse me, I'm David Sturch, 534 Glencoe Avenue, Waterloo. I'm also the general manager at Met Transit. I just wanted to be here today to tell you to thank you for your financial support over the years for Met Transit and as you prepare for your budgets for next year, you know, that continued support because without the cities, federal, state and other local jurisdictions, we wouldn't be able to operate our, our business at Met. So I, again, I want to throw out a sincere thank you and appreciation for the city of Waterloo.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening, can you guys hear me okay? All right. Hope you all are doing good tonight. Just wanted to say thank you to all of you guys who are doing your services. I just wanted to?
Sorry, identify yourself, leave an address, thanks.
I'm so sorry, Sam, Sam Blatt, I'm on Lafayette Street, just down the street over here. I just wanted to bring to the attention that about two years ago, about a week, week from now, we had a very big rally for LGBTQ rights, which stirred up a lot of controversy in this city and in this council. And I would just like to remind the four city council members who voted against, against it and to repeal the ban on conversion therapy, you know, how we feel now about, you know, just fast forward look, a lot of us informed you guys that we were scared about how the state level were going to do things and things in the future with the federal level too. And I just really wanted to come here and see if that accountability was understood. You know, we have a lot of things to worry about in this state and I don't think that this should be one of them. I think that this is gonna affect more cis people than you understand and just trans people, you know, women who have PCOS or men who have higher voices or hips, you know, it's, it's gonna affect a lot of people. And so the fact that we now have the first, the first state in our nation to be repealing acts in our civil right code is just, just wild. And so I just wanted to, you know, make, make a point that we don't forget these things, even though it happened two years ago, we don't forget these things and, you know, just remember these things. Remember to do the right thing the first time around, even if a lawsuit comes around, you can change your mind then, but don't be scared of it before. Do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Going a second time? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Mr. Mayor Protem, my heart is truly heavy. I, I walked into here today with, it felt like 10 tons bricks on my shoulder because of the heaviness and cloud over our nation at, which filters down to our state level. So I also wanted to let the constituents know that my heart is heavy, that I would never have thought that repealing that protection would happen, stripping us of that protection would happen. I am afraid of the ramifications of that as well, how individuals who, children are non-conforming, gendered or trans will be impacted adversely by this and the entire family will suffer as a result of it. We have a lot to learn. It's a lot to learn and I think we're gonna learn unfortunately the hard way. Secondly, lastly, I just want to say that we're a nation of immigrants, that the land that we are on now is the Iowa people's land. It hurts my heart to think that the refugees are being denied the protection that some of them need because they served as informants to our government and because of that, their lives are threatened and now we're denying them the protection and access to this country. So I just wanted to make those two statements.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And I kind of want to echo what Councilwoman Belinda is saying. So with the recent passage of Senate 418, which removes gender identity as a protected class in Iowa, what can we as a city do to make sure that our transgender community still has access to resources? They are protected, they are supportive and we reaffirm to them that Waterloo is inclusive and we are diverse and we love everyone that lives here. So I just, I want to know what can we do on a local level?
Well, I think one is to continue to lead by example. You know, we support many different activities, events from the multinational community in which we serve, from our Haitian community, our Latino community, our Bosnian community to our, just a wide range of diversities and influences, so we can continue to do that. Number two, we can continue to work with our state legislature. That they actually happen to be at the state and seeing so many different faces of so many different voices and so many different people, but also had an opportunity to hear some of our local legislators kind of create their arguments and their conversations around it. So I've been in conversation with Mr. Jerome Amos as well, but I think the totality of the impacts, we don't know yet. You know, we know that it will have an impact, but we don't know. And I had a recent conversation of, in addition to some of the human rights impacts, but also impact statements that are happening from many of the federal workers that are in there who, who also may have a forecast on how it's going to impact us with federal grants and other opportunities. So we definitely have to keep, keep our eyes open, but we have to continue to lead by examples and our Human Rights Commission is still there also, which has federal protections for a city of Waterloo size and demographics as well. So we definitely gonna lean on their leadership also. And so to our community, we are stronger because of the diversity that exists within our community as well and we will never shy away from that and that where diversity is not, is not a deference, but in diversity is one of the greatest assets that we have as a community. And so we need to continue to get the word out there and we need to continue to make sure that we lead by example on all those levels and stay next to our federal legislation as well, along with our state also. So thank you both for your, your comments as well. Is there anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
First of all, I want to recognize the passing of Mike Allen.
Yes.
Mike was my wrestling coach from 72 to 75 and we've stayed in contact throughout my entire life and he's, he always was welcoming to me. He was a great coach, a great mentor to a lot of people. His visitation is Friday at Antioch Baptist Church from 4 to 7 and the funeral is Saturday at 11 o'clock at the same place. So if, please reach out to him or his, I mean, his family in, in this time. And lastly, I had the privilege of attending the QPR training that you kicked off last week at, at Culture and Arts Center and it was put on by the Waterloo City Council, Junior City Council. Incredible, incredible training. What a, what a, what a fine group of, of, of young adults. And QPR is for suicide awareness. It stands for question, persuade and refer. And if you ever have the opportunity to take that training, I highly recommend it. Live and Running helps put it on, Live and Running Iowa, and it was, it was an incredible event and the, the stories that these students told that, that actually affected their lives and some of them had, had braced these events and it was just really, really important and I was glad I attended and I appreciate all the work our Waterloo City Council does each and every day. Thank you.
Thank you. And to add to the Mr. Allen portion, known Mr. Allen all of my life, actually, as well, so definitely saddened by his passing and then also, I don't know if it was mentioned while I was gone, Curly Haltman.
Yes.
Curly is what, two, what is it called? Two-star Major General, Waterloo East graduate and has won about every award you can think of as well. And his passing, he had passed and I think his wake is, anybody, is it this Friday as well, from 3 to 7 at Veterans Memorial?
Thank you.
And then the funeral is on Saturday at 1 PM at?
Westminster.
Westminster on Campbell as well, so two historic Waterlooans passing as well, so we want to acknowledge that. Counsel, is there anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
That motion's been made with a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Public comments closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bill's payment for February 24th. That amount is $5,489,992.55 and for March 3rd, $1,221,276.62.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Feis?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Within that, we have a couple of board appointments, a new board appointment for leisure service and a renewal for Ellen Vanderloo, Jeremy Kurt Kruth, the new Jeremy and Ellen, are you both here? You want to stand up for us? All right, and we have? All right, and we? All right, and we also have Sandy Greco for Culture and Arts Commission, and then Ross Smith for the Board of Adjustments. And so I just want to say thank you all for stepping up to the challenge, serving with this city, and we look forward to a continued great service and also to your new service as well. So appreciate you and thank you. Okay, double clap. All right, anything else, counsel? All right, so let's move on to, wait. All right, let's move on to public hearings, and it's the item that some of you are waiting for. Did someone take number one?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication notes, public hearing for sale and convenience of city-owned property, a portion of Miriam's Park located east of thirty-eight forty-three Sager Avenue to Waterloo schools.
Second.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. First up, I'm going to ask, I think there is a engineer from the school system who's going to speak first, and after that, we'll hear from the public. But who was that that was going to speak from the schools?
Is Kate not here, Jared?
Hello, I'm Kate Payne with Envision Architecture. I not, wasn't quite expecting to give a summary statement, but I can tell you that the request to a transfer property for Miriam's Park is driven by the expansion of the Waterloo High School project to bring the high schools together at the site of Central Middle School and the Career Center. And the roadway that's going to go through drive, it's not really a road, that goes through Miriam's Park is intended specifically for buses only. It is very limited use in terms of why the transfer is happening. Not quite sure what you're looking for, for information for me as an introduction, but I'm more than glad to answer your questions.
Of, thank you, Mayor. Could you just speak about when this will be used, its frequency, land usage of the abutting land that the school is purchasing from us?
So...
Yeah, those two things.
I'm sorry, could you just say that one more time?
What we'll do, we'll wait, if you have some questions, why don't we wait to the portion where counsel can ask? I thought there was going to be a quick summary that was coming forth, but if not, why don't we wait? We'll open it up for continuation of public comments, and then when we give it to counsel, I think Mr. Childs has some questions too, so why don't we wait just a moment?
Glad to answer them.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Please come forward to the rostrum, state your name and address for the record, and let us hear your thoughts.
Dennis Jewell, thirty-nine oh five Sager Avenue. Mayor and council members, I looked at this proposal, and the proposal says that we're going to keep one point nine seven acres as park, the rest is going to go there for buses, et cetera. And in there, it was said that the reason they need this route through there is to decongest traffic on Katuski and Huntington Roads. I'm wondering, has there been a traffic study done on those two roads? And then I know that at one time it was said they were waiting for a traffic study on Sager Avenue, but was there also a traffic study done on Green Hill Road and the intersection of Green Hill and Progress and Progress and Sager? Now, I also want to know, are we considering the housing developments that are coming up in Seer Falls, just at the edge of the property, right on the borderline between the two cities? There's going to be forty-three houses in the first addition, there's already roads and utilities in there, there's at least one basement and possibly two that have already been dug for that addition. And to the west of there, there's a church on the corner, not on the corner, but by that corner of, and the roundabout, that has been sold, and there's going to be five multiplexes with a total of a hundred and ninety-five units there. Now, we're going to have about two hundred and fifty, not quite, units in that area. Units off of Huntington Road to the south have been coming up, that new roads that have been put in and coming out to get onto Green Hill Road. There's been some near misses there. I just wonder if we're thinking about how many cars, additional cars are being, being put on Green Hill and are going to be coming through that intersection of Green Hill and Progress where the buses are going to have to turn into, to get to that road? And I just would ask that the council would maybe put this whole thing on hold for a while until you can look at all this and make a thoughtful and careful decision about the safety and the traffic in that area. Because it looks like to me that we're moving a problem from one area, and we're going to move it to an area that has more traffic. I, I think that if you look at it, you're going to see that there's more traffic on Green Hill Road than there is on Katuski or Huntington Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mary Jo Jewell, thirty-nine oh five Sager Avenue, Mr. Mayor and council members, and Mr. Anderson, I am here regarding Miriam's Park, and I am here for the kids in our neighborhood. Please keep Miriam's Park safe for them to play. You're proposing a portion of Miriam's Park in Waterloo to be sold for one dollar. Right now, the park's playground area and green space is approximately eight acres. In selling the land to the school, that would leave less than two acres for the park area for playground equipment and green space. This leaves a very small area for family picnics, playing ball, and walking dogs. If you allow this to happen, the school is planning to put a road in only a few feet from where children will play and families gather. This is the only green space play area in our growing neighborhood. Please consider the safety of the children. Mr. Anderson, Mr. Mayor and council members, would you want to be playing with your family, perhaps, and perhaps having a picnic, and have the air you are breathing be filled with diesel fumes? I don't think so. The school owns the land on the south end of this now green space and could be easily put, put a road there for buses, that is the shorter route to the new high school, and would be a lot less expensive to put in and maintain. And that area has not an area where children would be playing. Mr. and Mrs. Miller gave this land for a neighborhood park, and now you want to sell a big portion of it for a dollar and make the area unsafe for kids to play? I don't think this is what they had in mind. Child to mom, mom, can I go down to the park and meet my friends to play? Mom to child, sure, ride your bike, be careful and have fun. Ah, a few minutes later, child to mom, mom, it scares me to get into the park because I see big buses. Please don't put our children in danger when all they want to do is go outside, play in their neighborhood park, and have fun. Thank you. God bless and keep our children safe.
Thank you.
Lori Wright, forty oh nine Mark Drive, Mr. Mayor and Council. At the February third council meeting, neighbors voiced concerns about the road going through Miriam's Park, concerns of safety, traffic, noise, lost green space, loss of Miriam's vibe, and how the neighbors, neighbors will be treated through the whole thing. The road is met by opposition and sparked a petition with three hundred and twenty signatures because Miriam's Park matters. It's our only neighborhood park. It's heavily used, it's a part of our lives, a part of our well-being. Fast forward to now, a lot has happened. John Childs has been a big help. He just went after this and got some questions answered, looking for some, you know, resolutions to the concerns that we had. And there's been a real progress involving safety and how the road will be, you know, monitored. We also looked at perhaps on parcel F, looking at having the city own parcel F, of course they are now, plus all the way to the northern boundary of the school property. It just kind of makes sense that we just keep that space with the city. We trust the city. And the reason for the road is to decongest traffic along Huntington and Katuski. Was that noted in the traffic study? I have to admit, I didn't have a chance to read it yet, but if it was, it would be kind of a red flag. And will the road solve the congestion, or will it be a Band-Aid? And will we need another Band-Aid? We feel like we're funding the school with, with taxpayer, school taxes as well as with our park. Another red flag. Even government, government entities need to operate within their means and be a little more transparent to residents. So in closing, as you consider what you heard tonight, we respectfully ask that you remember that Miriam's Park is in a residential area, families live around the park, and families use the park, and the effects on property values. And we as a city need to find balance between the needs of our schools and the well-being of our residents.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to ask questions or address concerns about what's on the agenda? Is there anyone from the schools that have any comments about?
Hello, Jared Smith, three thirty-five Cedar Street, Waterloo. First of all, I do appreciate the community members for coming tonight and sharing their concerns. I appreciate Mr. Childs for working with us. We had a large community meeting prior to the vote where we talked about some of the concerns, and then we had a, more of a private meeting with you to go through some of the concerns of the community. The one thing I just wanted to share with the, and we totally, the, the perspectives of the, of the neighbors and the neighborhood, we totally get that. Just a couple of points of perspective is that we've looked at all options in terms of how do we get buses into the new high school? We're talking about two thousand students, so that's quite a few buses, and we've looked at every option, and we really have, and Kate, Kate and Zach back there could probably say, like, we've looked at every option in terms of where those buses could go to pick up students, drop off students. Even when we met with John, we talked about the different routes that the route, that the road could take, and there's simply no other option. We need, right now at West High School, for example, we've got as many as seven exit points for cars to go for, and potentially buses, and that, West High School has about sixteen hundred kids. We're looking at two thousand kids, and right now, we've only got three exit points. So this gives us a fourth. So without this exit point out to Sager Road for buses, we'd really have some serious issues going out to Huntington and to Katuski. One point of clarification, in terms of what's going to hap... Excuse me. There is a, so the gate, I want to be clear, like, there's only buses that are going to be using this road. There's no students who'll be driving on this road, there's no parents who'll be driving on this road. It's simply school buses. And the, the arm is mechanical, meaning like, a school bus driver has to, it's almost like a, like a, opening a garage door. It's like a garage door opener that would, that would open and close this gate. So the access to this road is incredibly limited, and it's only during the school day. Okay, so my understa... As we've kind of looked and saw when we, when there's students or there's kids who are playing at the park, you know, in, in theory, that should just be when school's not in session, or weekends, or the summer. On weekends, during breaks, during the summer, there will be no buses going through. So I get, I totally get the concerns about the traffic, about the safety, about the student, about the safety of, of children going to and from the neighborhood to the park. Just keep in mind that it's really only a couple times a day, before school, after school, and then an occasional time here or there where buses are going to be accessing that road. So I just want to clear up a little bit of that confusion, because when we first talked about it, it was, there'll be a lot of cars going through, and that's not the case. It's simply just our buses, that'll be our bus exit point. So I just want to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He'll have to tell you what the, what the, what his question is, if you haven't approached the diocese already. So, sir, could you tell one of them, because I left it open? Anyone else from the school while they're asking the question? Yes, Kate, you want to come up?
Do you want me to answer the specific questions? I gave you a bunch of them. You did, yep. Trying to remember what they were. So the number of buses, the buses are planned to go in and out of the roadway that will be, the added roadway that will go through Miriam's Park. It's my understanding that there are roughly ten or twelve buses in the morning and the same in the afternoon. They come in off of Sager, they loop through the site at the west side of the building, and then they go out the same way they came in. The idea there is standard school planning, which is to keep the buses away from the cars. In general, it's always safer for students if buses can stay on one side of a building and cars and parents and student drivers can stay away from the buses. So it's a general approach that's used in almost all of high school planning and design. So that was one of the reasons why we needed to do that. Probably have your email. So in terms of the traffic study, the traffic study went as far as, it went out to Sager to, what's the name of the street? I can't remember.
Progress?
Progress, thank you. Newsletter with a P. Out to Progress, it did the intersection, it down, it went out to Downing, it looked at the number of cars that the school would create. It did not look at the number of cars that would be added to this area based on future development in Cedar Falls. The school district, because they were building a new school, was asked to do a traffic study based on the added population of cars that the school would generate, not further development outside of the school. So the school was asked to pay for that traffic study, and it's been reviewed and vetted through the city engineering department. And there were no significant issues in terms of added buses going out that way as long as we put in the gates. So the gates are there to really limit the number of vehicles, and it's really only buses that can go in and out that way. It is gated.
All right, thank you, Kate. And ma'am, did you have an additional question for the gentleman? Kate, if you're, you just want to hang, were you done, or you had something else right now?
Go ahead. I'm not sure I got all your questions.
Connie Rommel, forty thirty-nine Sager Avenue. What we're, the other question is, if a soccer field goes in there, in that area of the green space, where will the parking be and where will the people come from to park there? Then my other concern is, we would like it in writing that any of the green spaces left there. There's supposed to be like a water retention pond there, and then north of there is supposed to be more green space. We were told in that meeting that would always stay that way. Can we have it in writing that will state it, that this will never be changed to something else? It will stay green space, like we were told.
So once we, once we get to the public comments, once we get through that, then we'll have staff come back and address, address that, or councilmen as well, so as soon as we get that.
Okay, then my other concern was, I would like to see crosswalk put on that street, crossing there for the kids, for the new, new road end?
To get to...
Across from the green space to the park.
Okay.
And as far as a comment about the kids, there are kids that are under, that are underage that will be using the park when the other kids are in school, so someone will be using the park possibly while the kids are in school. I know there's daycares around that area. I see them walking by my house. I lived the last house in Waterloo before you go to Cedar, Cedar Falls city limits. And people are walking and going down to that park all the time, and it's not just school-aged kids. And with, like I was saying with the hundred and ninety, or Denny was saying about the hundred and ninety-five... And with, like I was saying, with 190, or Denny was saying about the 195 units, I know Mr. Boson thought it was on the west side of Cedar Heights. It is not. It is on the east side of Cedar Heights. So we have that 195 plus the 43, traffic already going by my house added now because of those new houses that are gonna be built, and also those ones that are coming up from south of that new development are already using that road. So traffic is gonna increase quite a bit in that area. I know I had been talking to Cedar Falls City about that also, because something is gonna have to be done about that, because a friend of mine almost got hit already from them coming out from that new road. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone, if you have some comments, Kate? If not, we can...
I can answer the question about the soccer. The, you know, the soccer field is, there will be a new soccer field. We don't know if it'll be grass or if it'll be turf. That kind of depends on bid day. But the plan is that there is no additional parking for that, because really, the parking is driven by Memorial Stadium football games, which are the big attendance thing. The soccer field will not generate likely as many cars as a football game would. So I don't think that it's intended to be any different than a football night for soccer.
So they'll park in the same parking lot as where...
Same parking lots.
They'll park in the same, regardless of where it's at, they'll park in the same parking lot where they park for football games and all those things, is what I'm hearing.
And then to your comment about a crosswalk, there is a sidewalk that runs along Sager already, and the drive will have, because it's a public way, it'll have ADA slopes, you know, management of the sidewalk, and the truncated domes that you see when you cross a road. And that would be standard city requirement for a sidewalk that crosses and drives.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you. All right, so we do have, one thing I failed to mention, we do have comments on file, we have the petition on file as well, so I need to make note of that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
That motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and convenance of city-owned property, a portion of Miriam's Park located east of 3843 Sager Avenue to Waterloo Schools, in the amount of $1 with the retention of an access easement and utility easement as shown on the plat of survey, subject to land being deeded to Waterloo Schools for continued use, as open space as well as for an injunction while for cooling system of the adjacent school building, and new controlled access roadway for the new high school, with any future changes to these restrictions requiring the Waterloo City Council approval after the request by the Waterloo Community Schools, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
A motion has been made with a second. No, Jamie, anyone want to give an update, uses, land uses, or what's written in there already? Or, John, if you have any, councilman, if you have any specific question?
Jamie Newtonson, City Engineer, one of the questions that was asked about the green space for the detention basin, staying in place if the school decided to do something different with that detention basin, it would have to come back through our department, we'd have to review it and make sure that they were meeting all the stormwater detention Realistically, if they were gonna do something different, they would have to probably underground everything, and that's going to get real expensive real fast in order to put a parking lot or a road or do something different there. So I can't speak for the schools, but I don't know that they would be doing anything different, at least in the near term. As far as the traffic study, I can tell you that myself and our city, our traffic engineer, Mohammed Ali, have both reviewed it. The school made changes based on our comments, we're both satisfied with it. They did not study the intersection at Sager and Progress specifically because, and we gave the schools a choice, they could either study that intersection or put in controlled access of the road through Miriam's Park, and they chose to do the controlled access through Miriam's Park. So 14 buses coming through that intersection at Sager and Progress won't make any difference. As far as the traffic to the west with the additional building going on in Cedar Falls, that is all part of the base traffic model that was used in, set up by InterCog, that they are required to have as part of our MPO. The traffic study utilized that, so that should have all been included in there. Again, I'm not sure why, from a practical standpoint, why they would come, folks would come down Progress, come down Sager to get to Progress to go out, especially if you were in Cedar Falls and wanting to make a right, you would come right out onto Greenhill Road. So I'm not sure. Just my opinion. I guess anything else? Council has questions on, as far as the traffic? We are working with the schools to reconstruct Huntington and Katuski in the next couple years, so we will be incorporating things from the traffic study into the work that gets done on Katuski and Huntington both. So we are, we'll be working with the schools. Eventually, those things will come back to council for some review and eventually a construction contract.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to, to Councilman Childs first. I know from earlier, wanted to chime in, but, sir, we can hear your comments.
Thank you. I'll take this off for this. So thank you again for showing up today and voicing your concern. We've worked pretty hard on trying to find some type of compromise that will allow the schools to have an effective position getting people in and out, and still have the park maintain its original purpose. I do have one direct question based on what I've heard today. Soccer field, where was this, where is this planning ongoing? With my understanding, that there would not be anything placed in the current Miriam's Park.
The soccer field is not in the Miriam's Park area. It's on current school property.
Great, that's what I wanted to clarify. So, with the agreement that we have worked together with the city and the schools is that the land that is being purchased by the schools, which is also, I said this at our meeting, it's a public entity as well, so it's not like this is going to some person, it's a private entity, they could do whatever they want. It's going to another public entity. Will remain a green space, and we'll actually have increased green space and maintain that as a green space. Having it in writing, it's in the ordinance, or in the sale documents, it's in here, that they have to come back to us if they want to do anything at all to this land, and then we can, that's when you talk to us again, if something were like that, were like that were to happen. Some other compromises the schools have made, James, who was here a few weeks ago, requested to not have a galvanized steel fence placed along the border of his home, and we were able to get that changed to the black vinyl, which is a little, a lot more appealing, and will also still function as a fence and not just blow over in the wind like the fence that you get for your house. Other compromises that they've worked with is making sure that that, I know that Dr. Smith has already said it, but making sure that the lane, the driveway essentially is only able to use by buses, not service vehicles. That is because they will each have in their buses, an individual guitar, guitar, sorry, a garage clicker that will open and close that gate, only during the times when they need to use it for buses. I do agree that we need to look at the land, that the roadway on Sager, we need to look at that for the future. This is not until 2028, so we have plenty of time to make sure that we do this right, and that cars are not going to completely congest your area, or buses specifically are not going to congest your area. So, in summation, the park will remain green space. The only change here that's happening is this drive. If you are against just having a drive there, then just be honest, and just say it, say, I don't want to have a drive through the park. That's okay. That is what you, we're here to hear. But I think we've answered a lot of the questions and concerns, but if you still have a problem with that part, then that's fine, and that's what I want to hear, that you have, that's your general concern. But in terms of everything we've asked, you've asked, I think I've gotten everything back to you thus far, so now it's just, is that enough? Is there anything else that you might, that I might have missed? Is that okay, Mayor?
Lori Wright, 4009 Mark Drive again. My question was, will, will the road through the park solve congestion issues? And I'm sure it'll help, anything will help, but will it solve it, or is it a Band-Aid?
The road through the park is for buses, and that's the, the only one. It's controlled access in and out, no one else can do that, because I believe at the, some, one, one of the challenges, and we're not able legally to hear more public comments after we close the public hearing, so sorry about that. But it is only for the buses, and it's controlled access, because there was a concern of additional cars and those things going through near where the park is at. There was also a concern with regards of the uses of the park. You have a beautiful park space there, and, you know, that use will remain, remain there as well. But, councilman?
Thank you. So it will remain a green space, it will relieve the congestion that would have come from having additional buses on Huntington and Katuski. That's the issue with buses with the cars altogether. That's what they're trying to avoid. And one other question that was asked, and I think needs to be pointed out, is the south side that the school already owns, where the detention pond is currently, why can't the road go through that? Well, one, it's a U shape, you don't want, you know, 12 buses going through a U shape into a multitude of homes in that area, even more than going the other way. And secondly, it's a detention pond, so it's flooded all the time, which you know, when it rains, that part is pretty wet. So that's why they're not doing the U shape into that neighborhood, which, again, would be far less efficient anyway. So that's why they've made this decision. We talked for an hour in that one meeting, it was more than an hour, just about alternate options and what else they can do, and this was the best solution, and then coming up with the compromises in addition to it should be a positive for the neighborhood, having more green space, because now this is guaranteed to stay how it is. Internally, the school can still think of that area as their Miriam's Park. They don't have to change the mind of it. We don't have to change our minds, it's just who, which public entity is taking care of it. And now, if you have issues with someone mowing the grass, you can let the school board know about that area.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
It was mentioned, how many, could they repeat how many buses that we're looking at per day?
14.
I thought she said nine, that's why I ended.
Let's, let's, I thought it was 13.
Jamie Newtonson, City Engineer, there are 14 in the traffic study. 14 in the morning, 14 at night, opening year 2028. It goes to 17 in the morning and 17 in the evening, or in the afternoon by 2050, is what is in the traffic report.
Okay. So, and they said it's just...
Zach, do you have anything different?
Nope, that's just the exact thing that I was gonna say as well.
All right, so you can stay up here though.
Appreciate it. So, and mostly it's for Jamie, anyway. And it was mentioned, not in the summertime, and I've seen buses at West High for summer school. So are you saying there's not gonna be any, any buses for summer school? Because, like I say, I've driven by West High and seen buses parked there during summer school.
That's a legitimate question. We didn't really discuss summer school, but going to that, I could see us using that, or, you know, if it's, if summer school is gonna be less busy as a normal day-to-day, we could utilize the traffic elsewhere, off of Katuski or Huntington for summer school.
Oh, can you state your name?
Yes, sorry.
For the record.
Yep, Zach Kelly, Director of Operations for the Waterloo School District.
So, the, my, thank you. My next question for Jamie is, in this project, are we, are we gonna put permanent lights in at Progress and Sager instead of the cable?
I'll have to have that discussion with Randy Bennett, because that was not part of the discussion with any of this. The reason, again, because the school is doing controlled access for the road through Miriam's Park, the 14 additional buses at that intersection going through the, through the temporary signals isn't gonna make a difference. So we did not have them look at that's, that intersection specifically, because they were doing controlled access.
And also for you, sir, are we going, going to have enough time to get the amount of work that we need to get done prior to the opening of the school with Huntington, reconstruction of Huntington, a roundabout at Huntington and Katuski, the work we need to do on Katuski? And then I, I heard it in one of my meetings, that the possibility of a roundabout at Greenhill and Katuski, is that still on the plans, or is that out?
So one of the things that we will be looking at specifically for Greenhill and Katuski is the possibility of a roundabout. We're gonna look to see if it even fits, and how that lays out in comparison with a two-lane road on Katuski, a four-lane road, what exactly we're doing on Katuski, because as all of you know, that's a weird intersection at Katuski and Greenhill, and the, and the slip ramp, so to speak, to go to the north and all of that, and then South Hackett in there and all of that. It's just kind of messy. So we are, as part of the study with, the consultant that we will be hiring to do the work for us, we will look at that. There's no guarantees one way or the other. I honestly can't answer you whether it makes sense to do that right now or not, other than we will look at it and see if it makes sense.
Because I would think, sir, not to interrupt, but I would think it would be a major cluster to do it after the school opens, if we decide after the...
You were exactly right, Mr. Boson, and the, the, I, for the last week, I've been having, and I have a meeting tomorrow with the consultant that we're looking to hire to do all the traffic design, the signal design, all of these different things for us, that will be coming to council here in the near future. I've also sent an agreement to the Waterloo School District for them to be reviewing as far as the cost-sharing agreement for all of this. The hope is, and I say this not knowing what the next year is going to bring, but the hope is that we can get to construction next spring. My goal, as I've told the school, I do not want to be there in 2028.
No.
I do not want to be there at all. My goal is to get everything done prior to the school opening, and that's what I have told the consultant that I'm working, talking to right now, that we want this thing open. It's still gonna be a cluster over there, just for the simple fact that we have an active school that has to maintain, we have to maintain access for that stuff. So it's, we're gonna be spending a lot of time with the schools, making sure that we can still get access in and out, and it's, it's gonna be messy over there for, for 18 months, just from the road work. So that is our goal, is to make sure that we're out of there long before August 2028.
And have we identified funding for all the work that we have to do as part of this project?
So as part of this, the school, again, there's, there's an agreement with the Waterloo School District to pay for their portion based on the traffic study. They would be responsible for a portion of the work. The rest of it, as some of you may remember, we did, a couple years ago, we did Katuski south of Huntington, and the intention was, we were going to continue to do Katuski further to the north, and then we found out the school and doing all that. So local option will be paying for the rest of the work outside of the portion that the school is paying for. There may be some TIF money coming out for the Greenhill in intersection, but again, we'll take a look at that as, as we go through it.
Well, currently, the Greenhill intersection is not in a TIF. It's just north of that Greenhill intersection.
I thought that was in...
I've got a map at home, and I looked at it before I came here.
I thought that was in the University of TIF.
The University of TIF is just north of Greenhill.
Okay.
And that, that's all I had for you, and I just had one, one comment for the, for the, for the people in that area. Are you guys, are you, are you attending the Cedar Falls City Council meetings? I know they're the same night as ours. To, to talk about all of your concerns about limited access in and out of that housing development that's forcing people to come up on Sager, they technically should be going out on Huntington, or they should be going out on Cedar Heights, if that's a possibility, I don't know. But, but, but I truly believe that this is something that you, that you could advocate at City Council meetings, because of how it's gonna affect your neighborhood. And it's just a statement, I don't, I don't need a reply, I'm just making a statement. Thank you.
Right, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
As somebody who lives one block from West High, I, the traffic, I understand it 100%, because I live it every day, and I know, like, I can't leave my house, if I leave my house one minute later, it takes me a long time to turn on to Kimball Avenue, so then I have to kind of do that. But the conversation that we're having here is about a road for 14 buses, not the thousands of students that wa- I mean, that, I get it, it's neighborhood walking, there will be an increase probably in students driving because of the location, so you're gonna have more of that traffic. We're not able to control what Cedar Falls is doing and putting out there. What we can control is the ability for a brand-new school to have the, the access for their buses to get in and out as safely as possible. So, summer, and I don't want to answer Mr. Boson's questions, but as far as summer school, you're not gonna have 14 buses a day, so I would assume that you would, that they would be, like, they could drive right up to the front door essentially, you know, so they wouldn't even necessarily need to have access to this, this additional road, so, you know... So they wouldn't even necessarily need to have access to this uh, this additional road. So you know, th, th, that's just some things to consider. I know loss of green space is always uh, difficult uh, when we're doing this kind of stuff. However, I, I really believe uh, this project needs to move forward. Uh, so the school can plan, the city can plan. And as uh, what Cedar Falls does, I, I appreciate Mr. Boson's comments uh, at the end. You know, go to, go to their council meetings, talk to them about what they can do to help control the traffic as well, uh, when it gets out there. And we will do whatever we can to help limit uh, and to do things to, to control traffic as much as we can uh, between uh, Green Hill, Katowsky and Huntington. So, thank you.
And then uh, Mayor Lauter and I have monthly, monthly scheduled meetings too, and I'll make sure I communicate as well. Uh, the serious need to take a look at the traffic also.
The only thing, other thing, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, that I would add is just the expectation of um, access for clearing during weather events. Um, I'd imagine that would be something, Mr. Snow and things.
You got a question about it?
No, just a comment that people should expect. So it's like, oh, there's not, there's only a bus going through. There wasn't.
There'd be snowplows.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I, I would assume that the school takes care of their plowing of their streets. I'm hoping.
On their property.
But um, I for one foresee a lot more things that are be coming down the pipe with this, with this, with the traffic that this new school is gonna be adding to that area and that neighborhood. Uh, this is just number one. There's gonna be dozens. Um, I'm not in favor of destroying a park that was donated. That means a lot to all the people that have been talking. Um, I think this is, I mean, in the conversation that just came up tonight, there were seven access points to West. My daughter goes to West as, as Councilman Ray had just mentioned. Um, that traffic is a nightmare. I can't imagine what it's gonna be like in that neighborhood, um, when the school's in there. I'm all in favor of a new school. I'm not in fa, I'm not saying I'm against the school. I'm just not in favor of what the problems that are gonna arise from this. And I think starting with this school, I, I just don't think this was thought out well enough. Even with this new drive, there's four access points. There's seven at West. And West is a nightmare. Four is not gonna be enough, even with this drive. So we're gonna have act, we're gonna have problems regardless. And as everybody knows, when you're in high school, you're looking for side routes through neighborhoods to get in and out of school faster, to beat the traffic. There's gonna be kids ripping through these neighborhoods in their cars going to and from school. And I'm not talking about the drive. I'm talking about the regular roads that are there anyway. So that's just my opinion. Um, I don't like it.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question for the neighbors. Um, well, not necessarily a question, but I'm, I'm just curious with, with there being in writing that the remaining uh, space will stay green space, does that make them a little bit more easy on having this road here?
Well, councilman had fielded questions about um, if that park was going to be removed, if it was going to stay. What does this do? What does this portion of this agreement do to that park space?
The park space will remain the same. There is only an addition of this drive there, and it will guarantee that it stays this green space. And again, the portion of the southeastern where the neighborhood ends will also remain a green space because that's where the drainage is. And then the south part of the, west part of that road will also remain a green space. So you keep the sledding hill, you keep the trees, you keep all the things that you wanted to keep. There's just a small drive being added to make, to allow the high school to have proper bus routing.
We've had public comments already, so. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Right. Um, and then this, this, um, anyway, so um, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Boson.
Do you have another question?
I just have one closing thing. Um, it is difficult to make decisions that affect us 30 years from now. And to think of the future casting of this city, and it's hard that we have to make these decisions. But I think that we've done our best to try to acknowledge all of the problems that the neighborhood has had with this and resolve them as best as possible. When this originally came to me, it was just a road. It was a regular old road. And now it's a controlled access drive that has additional space for you that will stay. It's not gonna be a soccer field added in the portion that was Miriam's Park. So I, I know that it is not ideal, but thinking about our kids in 30, 40 years and keeping them in Waterloo and not having them move across the country and getting people like me who moved here from another state to stay here in Waterloo, it's gonna be a big deal. And that's what we have to be looking towards in our future. We have four years to make sure that the traffic on Sager is fine, and we will make sure it is. Thank you.
Alright, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
No.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. So uh, that passes by a vote of six to one, so appreciate it. Thank everyone uh, for all your comments. Um, one other thing, um, at your neighborhood meetings, uh, once things get started, you're able to have a section where you can work with the schools to get an update on that as well, of what's happening?
Yes.
Alright, could someone take number two?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's for the amendment to the East Waterloo Unified Urban Renewal and Redevelopment Plan uh, to update projects and project budgets to be included in the plan and other general updates to the plan.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the urban renewal redevelopment plan, the projects going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion made with second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution affirming the previous determination of an area of the city to be an area of slum and blight in an economic development area, determining that the development or redevelopment of said area is necessary to the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare designating said area as appropriate for an urban renewal project and approving the plan amendment.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Quick question on how we came about on the Midport Development Area as a, as a blighted slum and blight TIF.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I have to go back to the year which they actually established the TIF. Um, but it was a long time ago. Um, I'll get you that year. Um, but they basically picked up a lot of the uh, there was some dilapidated housing um, along Levercy. Um, one of them, I believe, was a drug house that was, that was busted. Um, the TIF district also picked up a large portion of the Broadway uh, cor, corridor going out there, including the Parker Street, former Schultz Manufacturing Area and some of the uh, empty buildings that were over there. So that was how they did it back when they adopted it uh, you know, uh, over 20 years ago. I'll have to go back and look at the date.
It's my understanding that it's, it's pretty easy to, to, to designate slum and blight by just putting it on your application. They don't really look into it that deep. That, that's what I've been told. So.
Again, there was definitely blighted buildings within the area that was designated overall.
Then, because the only reason I'm getting at that is because this, this TIF is a non-expiring TIF then, correct?
That is correct under current.
Since it's slum and blight. And, and uh, as far as economic development goes, what, what do you consider a good trade off for city investment to, to jobs financially?
I guess we don't normally look at the specifics of jobs um, in our development agreements. We look at the property tax base and what the repayment is there. Um, obviously, this, the sole change for this uh, coming to council right now is for the International Paper Project, which is 90 high paying jobs, which all meet the High Quality Job Creation Program for the state of Iowa.
And, and I agree, and I'm 100% behind it. I voted for it. But when you look at 17.5 million, that's our adjustment to the TIF for the International Paper, correct?
We, what we will actually spend.
Well, that's what it says in, in your adjustments.
That will probably include rebates, um, which will go back to them. I mean, we're probably spending closer to four to five million in, in actual costs um, for the rail line and, and some improvements. And there's, this is a, I think a hundred and, a $260 million project for them.
And the only reason I ask is because it's at, at a 17.5 million and 90 jobs, it's $195,000 per job, if you look at it that way. So, but you guys don't look at it that way. You look.
And again, the 17.5 million would include the rebates to them, which is giving them back a percentage of the taxes that they'd be paying, and those are taxes that we're not receiving today because it's farmland.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
I could make a motion, receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing of the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 1651 Sycamore Street. Second.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to decide him on the agenda?
Forest Dilu, 1725 Huntington Road. I looked at this piece of property when we initially bought it. We ta, paid three times the assessed value when we bought it. I assumed then that we had somebody for it. That's the way we normally do it. So we paid $250,000 for this property. Now we're going to give them another $137,000 in development money. So it's gonna cost the taxpayers initially $387,000 to a company who in the past, when they get done with their properties, they give them back to us, the taxpayers, to tear it down. The Big Wrath building down there, it's gonna take millions of dollars to tear it down. They had it, gave it back to us. Down on the Cedar River, there's one that burnt recently, has their name on it yet. That was given to us. We're gonna have to tear that down and take out all the hazardous. You know, you need to start working for the taxpayers. The developers are getting wealthy off of us. People ask me, why are the taxes so high in Waterloo? I said, well, a lot of it is we give it away. We are very generous. You hear it every night. You hear it every week. You just, the developers, you just give them everything. You know, the paper company. We give them everything and then agree to buy their old property if they don't want it. If they can't find a buyer, we'll buy it. And we'll probably pay them two and a half times its assessed value too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this project going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral unwritten comments. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, wait, uh.
Was that for number three or?
Number three.
Yeah.
He raised his hand.
Really wasn't looking forward to speaking tonight, but.
Your name and address for the record.
Eric Poe at 1656 Sycamore Street, Waterloo. Um, so we're looking to purchase this building that's right across the street from our main office and they're right on Sycamore Street. Uh, we're going to be putting that church back onto um, the taxable property list because it was a church where you, we're not receiving any taxes. We're going to make improvements to that building and we're looking at potentially putting a daycare into that building for the betterment of that neighborhood. So we are trying to invest into our neighborhood. If you take a drive down our block, there is old buildings there, some, some of which that we've never owned uh, that are literally crumbling to the ground right now. Drove by it on my way here tonight. Um, which is a massive uh, health and safety risk for people that are freely roaming in and out of these uh, abandoned buildings essentially is what they become. So yes, we are going to get this, this, we get a good deal on this church, but it is for the betterment of our neighborhood. And we, we wanna take care of our, our neighborhood and improve that area.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, um, Madam Clerk, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor.
Sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 1651 Sycamore Street in the amount of $1 to Crystal Distribution Services, Inc. And authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, and it, it might be a, a question for Mr. Poe. Uh, a 5,000 square foot addition on, onto that area. And when I looked at it on the, on the, on the map, it's almost the size of the existing building we have now. It's, that's just a little larger than the 5,000 square feet. So where, where's, where's that addition gonna go? On the east side, west side of that building?
Uh, that will be on the, the west side of the building.
Okay, so if you, if in fact you guys move forward with, with the maintenance building and then a, a daycare center in that, ha, have, have you had discussions with, with Mr. Anderson about the parking requirements that are gonna be needed for that building? Because it, it looks like it's extremely limited. Once you take away all the parking on the, on the west side of that building.
Um, I believe on the east side of that building, there's adequate space for a parking lot. There is a, a drive around of that building. Um, and there's like a little parcel of land to the east of it as well. Um, so I, I'm not familiar with how much parking that we require. Uh, but we do have parking across the street that that property used to use uh, when the church was still in place. So I, I, the property's been operating in that way for the better part of 30 to 40 years.
And the only reason I bring it up, sir, is I just don't want some unseen things that you're not prepared for down the pike. And, because I know you're on planning and zoning now.
Mm-hmm.
Correct? And I, I've just worried that, that you'll, you know, that you would have adequate parking, uh, number one. And a, and then a question for, for Mr. Anderson would be, if a daycare does go in that, do we need to do any rezoning uh, to, to put a daycare in that, in that area?
The, the, the daycare is not a solid plan at this point.
Okay.
We are trying to think of ways to utilize the building to its full capacity. It is a large space. Uh, but that is one of the primary things that we're considering for the space.
I just misunderstood because you, you said you were gonna put a daycare for the betterment of the, of the neighborhood.
And Noel, with our changes to the daycare portion of it, are we able to put uh, daycares in uh, any zoning block?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. That's correct, Mayor. Um, as part of, when we did the daycare changes to allow them in a lot more districts, one of them was so that businesses could have a daycare within their area, even if it wasn't industrial.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we were trying to be flexible that if, um, to make sure that business had adequate daycare in and around those areas. Uh, so that was a portion of what you supported, sir. So we thank you.
I do.
For making that happen. Alright, our counsel.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
According to the development agreement, it says it doesn't have to be any work to start on this building until six months. That's the latest date. Do you have a plan of when you're going to start the work? Will it be faster than six months?
Uh, we've already contacted a few different um, material suppliers. So when you're, we're, what, really what we wanna do is build a pole shed off to the side of it to use that as part of our maintenance shop. And we've, the way that you develop a pole shed is you gotta go buy the materials, and then you gotta find someone to actually construct it for you. So we've found the materials, we've got a price for that, and we're looking into contractors to actually put the building together.
You better buy those materials quick.
It, it should hopefully go a lot faster than our next expansion.
Right. Yes, sir.
Since this is going from a church to a business, does this immediately go into the tax rules? Yes, is what Mr. Anderson is saying. Thank you.
Alright, counsel. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Boson.
I apologize. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution, improvement development agreement with Crystal Distribution Services, Inc. With a maximum assessment, assessment agreement of $659,060 for the rehabilitation of the existing building and construction of a 5,000 square foot maintenance shop and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel, no questions. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. And uh, thank you gentlemen for, thank you for all your incredible efforts creating jobs in that area where uh, before there wasn't a lot of hope for residents. So uh, keep doing the good work. Thank you. Uh, could somebody take number four?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of a notice of public hearing for fiscal year 2025 CIP, pipelining phase five, contract number 1118.
Second.
That motion has been made uh, with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Uh, is there anyone that would like to uh, have comment on this particular item going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to close the hearing and receive and file oral unwritten comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I'd ask that we adopt resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Childs.
Yes.
Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move.
I move to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Our engineer's estimate for the base bid was one million twenty-three thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars twenty cents. The estimate for alternate one was a hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars seventy-five cents, and for alternate two, the estimate was a hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars thirty-eight cents. Our first bid was Institute Form Technologies USA LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was one million four hundred twenty-five thousand two hundred thirty-nine dollars forty-one cents. Alternate one was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars seventy cents, and alternate two, a hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars. Second bidder was National Power Rotting of Chicago, Illinois. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was one million three hundred thirty thousand one hundred nine dollars seventy cents. Alternate one, one hundred ninety-two thousand sixty-six dollars fifty cents, and, excuse me, that was alternate one. Alternate two was a hundred and sixty-four thousand six hundred seventy dollars seventy-five cents. Our third bidder was Hydro Clean LLC of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was nine hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars three cents. Alternate one, one hundred twenty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars sixty-five cents, and alternate two was one hundred and eight thousand five hundred nineteen dollars seventy-five cents. Our final bidder was Municipal Pipe Tool of Hudson, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was eight hundred thirty-nine thousand one hundred sixty dollars seventy-five cents. Alternate one, one hundred forty-two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars seventy-five cents, and alternate two, one hundred twenty thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars twenty-five cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I ask that we adopt resolution approving award of, award of bid to Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC of Hudson, Iowa in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty cents, approving the contract, bonds, and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-five CIP pipelining phase five, contract number one-one-one-eight, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take items resolutions one, two, and three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to approve the, make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First is resolution approving a purchase agreement with No Before, Inc., in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and fifty cents. And that's for three years of security awareness and compliance training software and support, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Number two, a resolution approving an amendment to a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of four hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, previously approved for four hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred dollars in conjunction with the Rehabilitate Runway eighteen thirty-six design, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number three, a resolution approving a contract with Blackhawk Sprinklers, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars in conjunction with the server room dry foam sprinkler system, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Any questions on these three items? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir?
On the Blackhawk sprinkler, one can, I'm just looking for some justification on why we are moving forward with a foam system in that server room that we've never had before.
Right, is there? Mr. Sheehan, but.
I'm glad he's here.
Chris Sheehan, but IT director.
He's always here for some reason.
So, out of our public works facility, in the data server room out there, we're getting more and more equipment out there. So, it's just becoming more important that we basically get the water out of there, so we don't want sprinklers going off with all the electronics that we have in there, so.
So, would this be in the traffic area for where most of the equipment's at, and Mohammed's like?
Yes, there's traffic servers in there. It's not the video room, but it's the, there's a server room that's kind of behind locked doors that has traffic servers, camera servers, some backup systems that we utilize here. So, it's kind of a secondary data center that we have.
Did we end up having to put additional air conditioning in that to serve that, or?
It already had that.
Okay.
So, it had that previously, so we're good on air.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else, questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take four, five, and six?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like, excuse me, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving addendum number three to the EN Communications Contract with EN Engineering LLC of Warrenville, Illinois in the amount of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars plus four thousand dollars per month for inspectors' travel expenses, excuse me, in conjunction with the EN Communications Contract, City of Waterloo, Iowa Project Management, Construction Management, Construction Inspection and Engineering Support Services twenty twenty-five, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Next is to approval, a resolution approving a development agreement with Crystal Distribution Services, Inc., with a minimum assessment agreement of twenty-four million five hundred thirty-eight thousand five hundred seventy, seventy percent property tax rebate for fifteen years and a hundred and thirty-seven thousand economic development grant for the construction of a forty-two thousand square foot expansion located at sixteen fifty Sycamore Street, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document and a request by A and D Auto Sales LLC for an appeal of the city engineer to allow automobiles to be parked in the city-owned right-of-way located between the street and property line of seven twenty-one to seven twenty-seven Birmingham Avenue in the M One Light Industrial District.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone that may have questions for us? Counsel, questions? Sir?
There was some good discussion at the planning and zoning on number six. I was wondering if the staff could talk about that?
All right. Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Knutson, let me give us.
Jamie Knutson, city engineer. Mr. Nichols, you're correct. There was a lot of conversation there. This particular area along, along, not just where this business is, but that whole neighborhood down there, we have been called out numerous times due to code enforcement issues, having to go out, survey things to make sure code enforcement could issue tickets because of parking all over where they shouldn't be parking. This particular individual has had issues in several other locations where he is not in compliance whatsoever. And we just do not want to create another issue out there compared to what's there now. So, it's just, we don't, again, we've had enough complaints out there that we just don't want to add to this, allowing him to continue to park out there.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Longshire here, and I, and it bothered me a little bit that, I attend all the planning and zoning, that staff had recommended against your recommendation to deny the request. And yet, and I appreciate it that it was denied, and it was only, it was like a six to one vote. The chair was the only one that voted in favor of allowing this. The problem I have is I deal with code enforcement a lot, and they've been dealing with this individual on a number of areas that he has never come into compliance on, and it's just court date after court date. And I'm afraid that this would be another issue with that. It's a line of sight issue when you're coming up to Birmingham, and that when you can't look down and see traffic coming at you. That's another area. And I brought up at planning and zoning that not only are those cars infringing on the public right-of-way, but if you look at how that building was, additions were put on that building, the building is in the public right-of-way in three different areas. And I personally can't support overriding the planning and zoning's ruling on this. I think that this individual really needs to come into compliance on his other issues first. And I don't think we should even address this in the future. I think that's a terrible precedence to set over there, and we should just move forward. Thank you. And I have questions on the crystal ice, if you don't mind.
Anyone have questions on this item?
Well, Jamie's up here.
All right, Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. And I was curious with Noel on the crystal ice, maybe he can help me on this. Where we came up with the seventy percent for fifteen years?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So, obviously, as the projects get larger, the incentives generally go up. For projects under one million, we give free land or five years of fifty percent. As projects get over one million, we give free land and five years at fifty percent. Generally, when we get over three million or three point five million range, we go to ten years at fifty percent. And then generally, when we're over five million, we're going up to fifteen years. In this area, being the Wrath area, everything's a little bit more difficult to fit in there and all that. We've been at seventy percent for the rebates, similar to the downtown schedule for quite some time for projects of this size.
And my concern is, if you compare the two projects, let's just compare International Paper to Crystal Ice. Nine hundred thousand square feet, you know, forty, forty-two hundred square, or forty-two thousand square feet. Five million dollars of additional value, taxable value, that they're going to get seventy percent tax abatements on. International Paper, forty million, that they're getting, and then fifteen years at seventy percent tax abatements for Crystal Ice, but yet out there for International Paper, we're going to give them fifteen years at fifty percent tax abatements. So, it's really not apples to apples, because you've got this major project over here that's only getting fifty percent tax abatements, and then you have this project that's considerably smaller when you look at forty-five thousand square feet to nine hundred thousand. And I was, I was okay moving forward with this until that other clause on page seven was put in there. And that has to do with the Wrath building. I was not in favor of us purchasing the Wrath building for two point nine million dollars. I voted no on that. It was before the other newer council members were on the council, and I voted no on this. And I asked specifically at that time if there was asbestos in the building, and we were told no. And I asked if there was a report, and you told me that they had a report, you hadn't seen it. We came back for another issue with that, and then I asked about a report, and I was told that there's no asbestos in there because we were told that they replaced a bunch of piping in there, and the asbestos is gone. But now, we had H R Green come in and another other company to do asbestos survey. Of course, one of the things, they did find a lot of pipe insulation shoved into a room. So, evidently, there was no asbestos abatement at that time. It should have been. I hope no one was exposed to asbestos. And now, we've got an entire roof over the smokehouse, the old smokehouse that's asbestos. Is that correct?
The old smokehouse.
At the six-story building, where the old smokehouse used to be, that roof is asbestos. That was in the report.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so because of that, we're going to probably be looking at a rack 'em demo. Am I correct on that? If your roof is?
At this point, we're not looking at a full rack 'em demo or anything like that. We believe it can still be isolated, but they're still working on that.
They're still working on it. So, my question, my problem is on this particular addendum to that, to that agreement is that we purchased, they owned the property originally, but yet we bought that property out from underneath them for two point nine million dollars. We're going to have seven hundred thousand plus in asbestos abatement. Thank God, we've got an environmental protection grant for that.
Yep.
And I don't think we can tear it down for under a million, million and five, looking at the size of that facility with tipping fees and everything else. So, we're going to have five million dollars in that project to give it away for a dollar, once it's all cleared out, and to add another hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars on the top of that in case they need to do any additional dirt work. And I wasn't trying to correct Mr. Delveux, because he mentioned a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars on the daycare, on the, on the old, the church project, but that hundred and thirty-seven thousand is in this project, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's my issue. My issue is that I didn't think we should have bought it in the first place. We're going to end up with five million dollars of money coming out of that Wrath TIF, five million plus. And then, we're going to give it away after it's leveled out, and that I have my issue with. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Just in reference to some of that, so, you know, when we say we're giving it away, so we can't give away land for free. We have to have a public benefit come back in, and so we look at taxable value being created. Of course, you know, when you look at a greenfield site, you know, a lot of cities are doing greenfield sites. A lot of cities are building business parks and industrial parks, and the city of Waterloo is doing that as well. International Paper is a great example of that, where we're developing some greenfield along the west side of the airport that I think we bought in the forties, so it's great to see that happening. You know, this is a brownfield site. There's a lot of cities that are not addressing their brownfields. The city of Waterloo is aggressive in going after and cleaning up our brownfields. We've shown great success. You know, going back to the eighties when the Wrath packing plant went bankrupt, the city of Waterloo had loaned them money. Blackhawk County had loaned them money. When they went bankrupt, the city of Waterloo gained access to all this land. We demolished probably over twenty-five buildings out in that area that were formerly the Wrath Packing Plant, and now we are seeing some positive things happen back in here. You know, Crystal just completed a hundred thousand square foot building, which added ten million dollars in taxable value out into that area, which is paying about eighty thousand dollars a year in debt service and TIF money back to the city of Waterloo from that project alone. This is kind of the next step of that. I believe they've hired seventy new additional people with that hundred thousand square foot building. I believe with this building, they're estimating another thirty jobs for this. This is actually kind of a manufacturing and cold storage facility. And this one will be adding another fourteen thousand to debt service, another seventeen thousand to debt service between the two projects, and about another forty-two thousand dollars a year into the TIF district for these projects. So, we are seeing a return. It is expensive to build in the brownfields area. It is expensive to get projects, and you're limited. You know, some projects, some companies won't go to brownfields area. They want to go to the greenfield sites. They don't want to deal with the unknowns of contaminants and all that that had been there over the year. So, Crystal has been a great partner to us, and we are seeing a lot of that return with these projects.
Well, it should be noted also, sir, that what you talked about, their original project, the hundred thousand square feet, is also receiving seventy percent tax abatements.
That is correct. That was ten years at seventy percent since we were acquiring the buildings. We went down from the fifteen to the ten.
So, we still have eight years on that. That was twenty twenty-three, correct?
They actually haven't had any rebates yet because taxes are always behind, so your twenty twenty-three taxes are coming due pretty soon here. So, they'll start receiving the rebates on there, and we'll start receiving the TIF money.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, you have a statement to that? Come on up, please.
Yeah, I would just like to point out to the county, oh, sorry. Yep, I'm Eric Poe at sixteen fifty-six Sycamore Street. I would like to just state that we are thankful for tax rebates and purchasing property and working with the city of Waterloo has been really helpful for our growth. I would like to point out that over the years, we've demonstrated a history of developing that site, developing more jobs, and we're not taking that money to the bank. We're reinvesting into our neighborhood, making it a better place to live and work. So, we're not just trying to scam taxpayer dollars. We're looking to develop our neighborhood and make it a better place for everyone to be.
Thank you. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
I got a quick question on number six, just to clarify for both calculating votes and for the minutes. So, voting in favor of item six, that is a vote to overturn both planning and zoning and the engineer's recommendation. Do we need more than a majority vote to overturn the recommendation, the no vote by planning and zoning? We don't, that's in the parking code or the zoning code, or? Okay.
Clarify.
It's in the, what, what part of the code? Okay.
It's not under no dash four dash one.
Okay, thank you.
So, is that where she, you need to reference that from?
Yeah.
So, they don't need a two-thirds?
Okay. It's just a simple majority, okay.
But a no vote on six is not to overturn planning and zoning?
Correct. So, voting yes overturns the city engineer and planning and zoning?
So, let's take, let's take four, five right now.
Yeah.
Roll call vote on four and five.
Okay. Mr. Bozen?
Yes, four, no, five.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, both four and five.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes, both four and five.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes, on four, no on five.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And number six in itself, if you want to reiterate what that means.
So, voting in favor of item six is to support the appeal of A and D Auto Sales and overturn planning and zoning and city engineer.
Right, so a vote, so what would the vote be?
If you vote yes, you support the appeal of the business.
If you vote no, you support the recommendation?
Yep. If you vote no, you support the recommendation of the city engineer and planning and zoning.
And Mr. Bozen had mentioned some concerns a little bit earlier, so. Madam Clerk, roll call vote on six.
Okay, Mr. Bozen?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
No.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
No.
Mr. Childs?
No.
Mr. Simon?
No.
And Ms. Wilder?
No.
And Mr. Foyce?
No.
All right, somebody take seven, eight, and nine.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving supplemental agreement.